It is 7:01 PM on December 11, 2018. I'd like to call the College Place City Council. College Place City Council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for a pledge of allegiance. And Ms. Nyhagen is asked to do an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we're thankful that we can come and do the business of the city. We ask that you would guide us in the direction that we take. Thank you so much for our dedicated staff. And Father, as we think about this time of the year, we think about those who are less fortunate than we, and help us to do something for them this year that we might honor Thee. In Jesus' name I ask. Amen.
Amen. It's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on items not already on the agenda, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, before you as a consent agenda approving this evening's agenda, we're going to make two changes. Mr. Bowman is ill and will not be present this evening, and we are moving action item 12.12 to action item, excuse me, 12.5. 5.12. I have listexia today. And to 5.01, so as not to retain the individual here through an entire meeting. So 12, 5.12 to 5.01, and not presenting Mr. Bowman with his 25-year pin. Is there a motion?
I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded, I think, by Mr. Bobbitt. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Chief Tamaras, Holiday Yard of the Month.
Well, it's that time of year, so we got a photo, I think, there. That's 1047 Southeast Crest Lane. And the owners, the owners are Eric and Angela Root, and they have lived in College Place for 12 years. And Eric's from the Walwaaw area, and he was absolutely stunned and excited, and I think he's already posted all over his social media that he got yard of the month. It's pretty good.
Really good.
Pretty good, you gotta talk to him. So anyways, they are our Holiday Yard of the Month, and we will be enjoying that, and then we'll pick it back up in the summertime.
May I ask a question?
Of course you may.
How does, how does one get to enter their yard and for the yard of the month? What do they have to do?
Yeah, so they can be nominated by anybody on our website. It's under our post page. And we've gotten a few nominations since we've been doing this for about a year and a half now. And this particular house, I asked actually my officers to, had a working relationship go around and pick a few houses, and they voted on this one.
Good, good.
Thank you, Chief. We have a public hearing. Ms. Kilgore, fiscal year 2019, final budget. Floor is yours.
Okay.
Technical difficulties. It's called a slow computer.
Okay. This is the evening of the final budget hearing, and so I'm gonna just give a presentation on kind of the overall summary of the budget and the things that have changed since the preliminary budget hearing. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. So we're starting the year with about $14 million. Revenues are about, just shy of $38 million. Expenditures, $40 million. Ending fund balance of about $11.5. One thing that has changed in this budget since preliminary budget is that I reannualized the 2018 year to get a better idea of where we're gonna end the year with our fund balances, which then changed the beginning balances for 2019. So I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. This is for the entire city. Total revenues, $37.7. This is just a depiction of which, what types of revenues there are. So you can see taxes are a large amount, and operating transfers are the other large one. And then charges for goods and services, that entails our utilities, so that's the other large one. Expenditures for the city, $40.4 million. You can see here, a very large amount of that next year is capital at $16.5 million. Transfers are also large. And then this is interest and debt service, and this has changed a little bit, which we'll go into detail on later in the presentation. This is a slide showing you the breakdown of the revenues between recurring or operating and non-recurring. Green is non-operating, blue is operating or recurring. And this is a depiction of expenditures in the same context. Operating, capital, and non-operating. Fairly evenly split. Now, this is a picture of our operating revenues versus our operating expenditures. We always, well, we have a policy that operating or recurring revenues will always exceed operating or recurring expenditures, and that is the case this year by about $1.7 million. Okay, current expense fund, total budget, $8.5 million. Recurring revenues, $6.3 million. Recurring expenditures, $5.7 million. That is about a half a million dollar positive cash flow. Minimum policy ending balance hasn't changed much since preliminary budgeted ending fund balance also hasn't changed much. This is a picture of current expense revenues and expenditures. And then this is a list of the changes in the current expense fund from the preliminary budget. So the first one was that, and this is a big one, we created a current expense reserve fund, number, fund number five. And I have a transfer of $200,000 going from the current expense fund to that reserve fund as a rainy day fund deposit. So this is a fund that we'll try to contribute to every year as long as we meet our minimum operating reserve balances in our other funds. I increased the transfer to the facilities reserve fund by $100,000 for a total of $300. This was because the facilities reserve fund had a very small ending balance in the original version of the budget, and I just felt much more comfortable having a little bit of cushion there. I increased the transfer to the equipment replacement fund by just a small amount, $7,000, to accommodate basically the cost of living increase in vehicles, I guess you could say, since we originally budgeted those. This one, I removed a transfer to the street improvement fund, because later on this agenda, I'm gonna ask you guys to approve a transfer now instead of in next year. So that will, should you approve that, take the place of this transfer, which meant I could take it out. I added a small software purchase. The Bias Asset Connect is a capital asset tracking software, and it depreciates for you, so you can better fund your depreciation and track when you are gonna replace items. And then I also adjusted the fund balance here. This is the new fund, number five, the current expense reserve fund. As I said, I created it based on our policies and made an initial deposit of $200,000 in there. Forfeited proceeds, we just adjusted the expenditure down just a small amount to match so that the revenues and expenditures match, and one does not, the expenditures don't exceed the revenues. Street Improvement Fund, this fund I mentioned, I removed the $100,000 transfer from current expense due to a transfer hopefully approved for this fall instead. Facility Maintenance Reserve, this is just showing the other side of the increase in the transfer, an extra $100,000. And I also, we have a small grant that we're hoping to get from PP&amp;L for LED lighting in City Hall. I added that in. Equipment Reserve Fund, just the transfer was increased by the $7,000, and the budget was increased to $55,000, and that's to buy two small economy SUVs. Economic Development Fund, this fund had a decrease in the beginning balance when I reannualized, which brought the total amount available in the fund down from $230 to about $178,000. I went ahead and budgeted that full amount for a closeout on the cars project. It's also possible we may need more money than that, and if that's the case, we'll just deal with that when it comes. For the water utility in Fund 410, the solar array project estimates came in higher than we had originally planned, so that was increased from $300,000 to $440,000. Also increased the grant revenues for that project from $300,000 to $440,000 because we still anticipate grants will cover the majority of that cost. And we were able to decrease the cost of the radio read meters budget from $1.5 million to $1.2 million, and that was due to getting a more precise estimate from the company on the project. And then in Fund 425, which is a debt service fund, we were able to increase the principal payment on the 2017 water revenue bonds by the $300,000 that we're saving from the budget of the meter project. So we're basically gonna pay off $2.5 million of those revenue bonds next year in a lump sum payment. There were no changes in any of the other funds, other than beginning balances, and nothing of any note. So this is just a recap. I'm not gonna read you through it and bore you again, but I will give you this figure. It's a total spend down of about $2.6 million, and that is due to the capital projects. So that's what I have.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore. Seeing, yes, Mr. Peterson.
Real quick, the payment, the pay down of that bond, the $300,000, that, obviously, I understand paying down of debt versus putting that, or maybe there's not the possibility of putting that into a reserve fund, or what are your thoughts on, are the motivation for that completely?
Well, I chose to put it back towards the principal just because we don't, really don't need that money. I have the rate model that the FCS group did for us, I've continued to do each year, and forecasting out, we really just don't need that money going forward. I mean, we might eventually in a long time, but there is really no sense in holding on to and paying the additional interest over time on that money, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Sherman.
So the vehicles that we're getting, it says that it's a travel and administrator vehicle, but those will both be for all staff?
Yes. Yeah, and those are replacing two vehicles. It's not, not adding, you're replacing our old Taurus. Aye.
Taurus. Hey, that's how old my cars are.
Your cars are BMWs. But they're Binares.
Touche.
Touche, yes. So I'd like to open a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council for or against the 2019 final budget, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. One more time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council for or against the 2019 final budget, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council on the 2019 final budget, either for or against, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing is closed. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. And we're gonna move to the former action item 5.12. I got it right this time. Homestead Phase 3D Final Plats. Mr. Ricard.
Thank you. Haven Homes has requested final plat for Phase 3D, which is a 47-lot subdivision phase of the overall 321-lot subdivision for the Homestead Village PUD. There are also several, I think there's five large tracts within that. One of those large tracts will become a city park. Although the city park is not being dedicated at this point in time, that'll be dedicated at a later date once the improvement's been made to that park. There are a number of items that have still not been completed by the contractor. Notably, the city's primary concern is the completion of the stormwater system. Also, a good portion of Dones Avenue going up the hill to the Cupola hasn't been completed, the road, road system, but the water and sewer are installed in those areas. Likely we'll see those portions bonded. But the upper portion, where most of the lots are, the road network isn't completed. There's still private utilities that are being installed up there for like power and gas. The developer also needs to contribute to the, Call Davy Witten Drive Signal to the tune of 62,568. And they also need to provide us with a financial guarantee for the infrastructure that has not been completed. And we don't, we don't have an amount for that because we're not, they're, they're still working on that, and so we'll leave that up to the city engineer to approve that amount as we normally do anyhow. So I think, so this is the second to the last phase, so we're, we're nearing completion of this development, which has been in place for nearly a decade, and we're excited to see it come to a close, and hopefully Haven Homes will find other projects to build in our community. But it's, it's a good neighborhood, and we're happy to see it progress. Any questions?
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution Number 18-050 in the matter of the final plat of Homestead Village, PUD Phase 3D, A47 lot subdivision, as requested by Haven Homes LLC.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen, it's seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ricard. Back to you, Ms. Kilgore, Fund 311, Street Project Interfund Transfer.
Sure. Okay. So we've brought, I've brought forward to you transfers for, between the Water Operating Fund and Water Capital Fund due to cash flow issues with projects and grant reimbursements. This is a similar situation having to do with the street project. In Fund 311, which is the Street Improvement Fund, this is the Fort and Academy project that caused this cash flow deficit here. This was the initial financial statement for the month of September as we got close to the closing, and there is a negative balance of $194,000 in that fund. That, I am requesting a $200,000 transfer from current expense to cover that deficiency. As I stated in the budget presentation, next year we were budgeting a $100,000 transfer from current expense to this fund anyway. So this is basically doing that early and just transferring more than we were originally going to, which doesn't hurt anything. This fund needs the money anyway. So I am requesting that you authorize the interfund transfer of $200,000 from CE to Street Improvement so that we can maintain positive cash flow in that fund.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore.
I might add that that deficit does become filled back in by grant reimbursements later this fall, but in September we had the deficit, so.
Seeing no questions, Ms. Selby.
I've moved to approve the transfer fund from current expense on Fund 01, the Street Improvement Fund 311, to meet Fort and Kevin Hartler cash flows.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. But you're not off the hook.
One more.
Check register and financials for September 2018.
Okay, so this was, this is normally on consent, but it was moved off of consent because I needed you guys to approve the transfer before you could approve the financial statements as a whole. So those, these financial statements for September do include that $200,000 transfer that you just approved.
Lucky.
So that's why they were moved, and that's the only reason. Everything else is status quo.
I'll make a mark to approve the check with the start of financials.
Second. It's been moved. It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. And once more unto the breach, approve, oops, get to the right. Final budget adoption and ordinance 18-026.
Do you wanna bring up the ordinance? Okay, I'm not gonna go through the presentation again, since you just saw it, but I will show you, this is the ordinance with the budget that I'm proposing for 2019. We adopted the budget by fund, so these are fund totals. And when you take into account the beginning and ending fund balances into the total, the budget as a whole is just over $52 million next year, which is the biggest budget since I've been here. It might be the biggest budget we've ever had in the city. But it's mostly good capital projects, so that is pretty much what I have to offer you, unless you have some questions.
Questions for Ms. Kilgore. Mr. Peterson.
Not really questions, you know, observation and a comment. We've gone through this process of the budget preparation and just, you know, so that everyone realizes that wasn't involved in that process. This has been discussed on several workshops, and we've, we've discussed this at other council meetings, and probably one of the more thorough representations and presentations of a budget that we've had, especially with the graphical aspect, which is easy for, for many of us to understand and, and adapt. So anyway, just once again, I thank, thank you, and obviously it's been an extremely thorough process this year. Not that it isn't always a thorough process, this has been unusually thorough this year, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Well, yeah, I guess, motion to approve ordinance number 18-026, adopting the 2019 final budget.
I'm getting hearing aids, and my directional capability will be. We'll get better, but I think it was Mr. Cleveland. Is, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, and I would like to echo Mr. Peterson's comments on the, the very diligent work done by the staff, done by Ms. Kilgore, and thank you all for your support as we've gone through this to make sure we have a really sound picture of, of where we're going in the future. Mr. Wizatell, Capital Facility Information Technology and Equipment Replacement.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This item has gone before city council several times over the last couple months. Nothing's changed here. The capital facility plan, that amounts to a little over $81 million. First year's really solidified beyond that. It's a tool for trying to get grant opportunities and make the projects happen. They're ranked high, medium, and low. We're high as it needs to happen regardless, because either the infrastructure's failing or something to that effect. Medium means it has to happen at some point, and then low means that either it is dependent upon a grant or development patterns going out in the, in a certain direction, and that's the only way those projects will occur. Equipment replacement, that just, you know, covers vehicles and so forth. And then the IT plan, that was really our first stab at trying to come up with coordinated strategy of how to tackle that for the six-year period, because we've had several issues of trying to replace outdated computers that are burning up from 15 years ago, and trying to get up to date with that. Capital, to get back a capital facility plan though for a six-year time period, our biggest challenge is really wastewater with the overhaul treatment plan issue. That comprises 45% of the capital facility plan, and then streets at the 30%. Water, once we get the two replacement wells dealt with, really is just replacing steel line, but that's not gonna be the bigger issue. Once we get the wells done, it's gonna be the whole wastewater issue and the street issue.
Questions for Mr. Wizatell. Mr. Bobbitt.
I'm just looking at the verbiage on the ordinance itself. Is that do ordains or do ordain as far as? Yeah, ordinance itself. It's just a patch.
Oh.
Typo. My question.
Where is it?
On the ordinance.
On the ordinance, it's at the bottom of page one. Just above section one.
We have a typo.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-027, which adopts the 2019 to 2024 Capital Facility Equipment Replacement and Information Technology Plan.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion?
Yes.
What did you say, 18-027 or 28? You said 27.
Green says 28.
Oh, okay, okay.
Sorry.
Good eyesight, just checking. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rizzatello, resolution declaring certain events as official community events.
Thank you, Mayor. This item's very straightforward, just events which we've helped to create and further just declaring them as community events. I read an article in the Municipal Research Service Center, which said from time to time, the odd others' office nitpicks this issue, where they want it declared as an event if the city is having, either staff provide security for it or outright managing it. So, that's what this resolution does, it covers block party, farmers market, movies at the park, our 4th of July event, the Freedom Festival, the Arbor Day we do down at Davis School, Fall Festival, Wawa Valley Veterans Day Parade, which is, we assist with the one that's held in downtown Wawa, and the Winter Fest, which just occurred.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Is there a motion?
I'm motion to approve resolution number 18-047, barring the block party, farmers market, movies at the park, parade, festival, Arbor Day, Fall Festival, Wawa Valley Veterans Day Parade, and Winter Fest, as official community events, as the College Place.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Stormwater Operational Code and Facility Specifications, I think that lies on your shoulders, Mr. Rizzatello.
Well, Robert covered this at the last workshop and previous meeting, but this is just putting in some ordinances relating to management of stormwater utility and the illicit discharges, so looking at discharges that we aren't aware of, and basically implementation of, implementation of the said utility, just guiding regulations. For stormwater utilities, this is very boilerplate, so these are West Richland and other similar-sized cities have said ordinances, so it's overly burdensome, it's within our size, so that's really what you see before you.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Ms. Sherman?
No, I'm just looking, but I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 18-028. Okay. Having Chapter 13.82 illicit discharge detection and elimination, and Chapter 13.86 stormwater management to College Place Municipal Code.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
You need the second motion?
Please.
Motion to adopt resolution, excuse me, number 18-048, updating the City of College Place, I can't see my eyes, standards specifications in drawing stormwater facility standards.
It's been moved by Ms. Nyhagen.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello. Next, the next action item is the Regional Fire Authority. The, as, as we've noted before, the, there's been ongoing efforts to take a look at fire services across the valley, and looking at the potential of, of organizing a regional fire authority, this essentially becomes a separate municipal entity from the cities of College Place, city of Wawa, and Fire District Four. This, this resolution allows that to go forward with the city of Wawa in a manner of discussion on, is it possible to do that? How would it happen? What would happen with that? How would it work? And how would it be financed across the way? This is not a, this, this is not the, the creation of a regional fire authority, it is just the creation of a study group to put that, to put those together, and then bring those back to the governing entities of those three entities, and ask whether they wish to do that. If all three wish to join a regional fire authority, that then has to go to a vote of the citizenry of each of those entities to approve the development of a regional fire authority. Overall goal is to, is to reduce some duplication that happens on, on the periphery, as, as I've noted before. We have, we have two Fire District Four fire stations that were closer to providing services and can respond faster than, than the volunteers in Fire District Four, and Fire District Four has stations that they can respond to faster on, in, in, in the city of Wawa, the city of Wawa can get there, and the idea is to do that and then try and reduce some of the overhead costs associated with emergency medical services, which was the initial driver in looking at something like this because of the fairly expensive cost, in particular for the city of Wawa, who, who does advanced life support on all their ambulance runs, and is fully staffed by professional firefighters rather than a mix of professional volunteers as we have here. May I answer any questions? Ms. Sherman?
You don't have in here any sort of budget amount for that? Do you know approximately how much?
I think we budgeted $10,000 on, on, eventually it'll get down to having a consultant take a look at some of the, some of the money pieces of this.
And that's part of the $10,000?
That would, yeah, it would be, oh, no, this, this is going to be covered by all three, and we have no idea what the cost is, it's not going to be great. Chief, Winter, do you have anything to add?
You did a most excellent job.
Your check is in the mail, yes. Ms. Nyhagen?
I'd like to say, I've been here a long time, and we have seen a wonderful, wonderful increase in our fire department and our police department. Very proud of them, very proud.
Any further questions? Mr. Peterson?
I would move to approve resolution, I would move to approve resolution number 18-049, which allows city staff to participate in the regional exploration study of Regional Fire Protection Service Authority.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. Any further discussion? Mr. Bobbitt?
Do you see any disadvantages in this?
The, I, I look at the, the disadvantage, since, since essentially the governing body is made up of the governing body of those three entities, current three entities, the, the difficulty is, is a perceived loss of, of identity within the city. And, I don't, I don't, I don't, management structure will essentially be very similar to what it is now, but instead of having three fire chiefs, there'd be one, but there's going to have to be some captains spread around here to be able to manage along the way with the overhead, but I think the biggest is just the perception that somebody's lost control, or we don't have the same service that we had before, and, and I believe that that is, that's, that really gets down to how we put, how the study goes, and, and what those three entities agree to doing and how it works. Actually, I think we'll get a little better service on some things, and overall, a much, a much more organized response across the whole area rather than three separate entities. But somebody thought there was going to be a cost savings with, by doing this, that's just, I think, like, you know, the need for, the need for two, the need for two fire stations, one out in Malula and the other one down on, on the old Milton Highway should go away with the central station, and we'll probably see more professional firefighters at the station than we currently have.
So, look, there's a longstanding history of College Place pride in their fire department.
Well, that's it, I mean, it is, you know, one of the two things, as we read the history, one of the, one of the two things that drove part of the formation in the city, one of those was, was a, was a fire department, the other was streetlights. I don't see a fire department going away, it, and it's what the name on the side is going to be, I don't know, but we'll, we'll see how that, we'll see how that sorts out as time goes on, as they go through this. I will tell you that, that, Chief, how long have you been in discussions of, of things like this?
So, I started in College Place in 1990, and this will be my fifth round of ordinance. And usually what happens is, we go, pride in oneself, and where do I as the individual, more than the community seems to be what has caused the problems in the past. I think coming this side, this time from the political side, saying, you know, we are supportive of talking about how to do service better, is different than the past approaches, where the past approaches were, you know, hey, we can do this better, let's see what we can do, and not have maybe community support, maybe not have support outside of the fire service, or even input from outside of the fire service. We tried to build a plan up, and then we were going to bring it to the political body and say, hey, you've got to fund this, and that just never seemed to work. So, this, this, I think, has a really good chance for open discussion. What, what that ends up to look like, I, I don't know, but I, I think we want to be at the table. I think we want to have input and influence in how fire service continues to grow and provide service to all our communities. Originally, you know, the three entities were miles apart, you know, it was three miles to get to Wawa from College Place, and we are a curve. So, we are different, and we need to be able to look at, how can we do different? And, and maybe that is, we do the same. I, I don't know that until we sit down and talk about it.
That's good. So, I take it this is not encompassing the whole county?
No, it's.
Fire District Four.
Fire, Fire District Four, which sort of surrounds College Place and, and Wawa. You know, we've got, we have another advanced life support, emergency medical service provider out in West County, with Fire District Five, and we may see over time a desire to, to come into a, a regional fire authority. Those are, you know, those are really, other than, other than District Five, the others are primarily volunteer agencies, and, and how it all works within the county remains, remains to be seen, but I think this is a good start. It encompasses, you know, essentially 50,000 of the county, 65,000 people, and, and has, that had, I think, has the best opportunity of success, but it, it, the process will probably take, of discussing how this would work and putting together a plan, is going to take about a year. It's not a, and, and I've been very, very proud and pleased with, with the discussions that initially centered around the cost of emergency medical services, transitioned to a, a discussion about how do we best provide for those that we serve, rather than, and there's, that's, some of that's already started, and I think that will help that. Mr. Cleveland?
It's very early in this process, we haven't even conducted the study. I'm kind of curious about what our own firefighting staff and volunteers, kind of what their reactions to this idea have been.
So, I'm, I'm a firm believer in secrets are a bad thing for an organization, so we've had lots of conversations on the topic with all my members, and they're certainly wanting to come in anytime, you know, feel comfortable talking through, on the topic. The challenges we face, and I think all three entities have challenges, our challenges is, which is also our, our positive, is our membership is here for college and the league. And so, we have, most of our volunteers lifespan is four years or less, so we really struggle in, if somebody leaves, how do I replace them with somebody who's trained, because I can't? And then, how do I keep the people who made it past the four-year mark, continue to stay interested, but they don't want to take a leadership role in the, in the department? Currently, as an example, we have three captains and myself, and each one of us takes a week, and we are on 24 hours a day for that week, we cover calls. Right now, we have someone who's been out on the back end, so that makes three of us covering calls, and we switch every third week. One of my members has 40-year volunteer point, he can leave anytime, I mean, he's, he's been doing it 40 years. Well, if he goes, well, then that's two of us every other week on. I don't have anybody who's willing to step up to do it, that is also an EMT, which is 80% of what we do, and that's kind of a requirement if you want to be an officer. So, from a selfish standpoint, I don't want to be on every other week. My wife doesn't want me to be on 24 hours a day every other week. The, the large organization has more depth of age groups to help cover that, and that is, that is a huge plus for our organization, even if we found a way that, or whatever way we figured out how to do that, that, that would be a very easy boom for me to explain to my volunteers and, and to you. You can all see that 18-year-olds are, are great at, at certain things. Managing? We want to manage the finances of your hospital.
Mr. Rizzatello?
And I would just say, I've also make, made sure, conduct outreach with the, with our IAFF union members, and they're in support of looking at this, so.
This was the, I think this is the first time that politically, the political leadership and the fire leadership are all on the same page, and, and willing to, willing to look at it, and, and like I said, it's been an evolution from worrying about money to talking about what's best for those that we serve.
This is probably the first time all three chiefs like each other.
And we're all agreeing to 12 months more of that.
Well, I, I, I have, you know, Chief Eastman and Chief Yancey, I've worked with them all since I've been here, good lord, that's 14 years, and they are incredibly dedicated and, and incredibly cooperative in a, in a, in a field that's rapidly changing. I describe, you know, that, the fire service has been uniquely successful, and they've done a great job of preventing fires, and now they've, they've assumed this great job of doing emergency medical services, and, and as the chief pointed out, 80% of their work involves an ambulance rather than firefighting, and they do, they do a fabulous job of both in a very changing world. Any further discussion?
No, but I'd like to say something. Back in 1989, I ran on the thing about getting a city hall here, and a fire department. There were some people that told me, you don't need a fire department, you can get it from Wawa. We never, we never gave up on it, and I'm very glad that we did, because we are College Place, right?
We are. See, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, thank you all very much. This, this is. This, this is a major change that we're, you're considering.
Stay tuned.
More to follow. Mr. Hartwig, travel vehicles.
We're coming to council tonight to ask for permission to purchase two vehicles that we use for travel. One, one mainly dedicated toward the city administrator, the other one for, for generic travel, for anybody that needs it. I do need to clarify one thing if, if I can, and that is, we, we're hiring a new engineering tech, so the idea is we would not get both, get rid of both of those vehicles at this time. We'd, we'd at least keep one so that they can go do some work.
Yeah, but we won't be driving them across the pass.
No, no. So, these would be, these would be dependable vehicles that are, are, for taking on, on longer trips. So, they're, they're, the vehicles are a Jeep Compass Sport. They're four-by-fours, they are, they're local. I mean, not where we purchase it, but, but we don't have to drive to Hermiston or Pasco to get warranty work or service work done on this vehicle. And so, I would just request that you authorize the purchase of the two Jeep, 2019 Jeep Compass vehicles.
I have a question that I just thought of. Why would, I know that we're looking at leasing on police cars potentially, is that something that we'd want to consider on this type of vehicle? Or they probably don't get driven as much, maybe not.
Yeah. We, I would, you know, I, I really didn't look at the leasing one on these type of things. Sometimes it's just better to follow it.
Mr. Cleveland?
Quick question. Yeah, sometimes we, we buy used vehicles, usually they're larger, like specialized equipment, which is incredibly expensive, so I would want it to cost as much as possible. Under what conditions do we consider buying used? Because I couldn't help but notice these are brand new, 2019, we'd be the first owner kind of stuff. So, do we have a, a specific policy that says this is when we'd want to look at buying used, even just a couple of years old, or just kind of get it right off the?
Well, well, what we don't have, this main purpose for newer ones is like, myself, for instance, having to go over to Olympia to deal with stuff that goes on with our grant applications, with the state legislators, and then what, we, it seems like we have a staff member in one of various departments that needs to go over there for stuff as well. So, the idea was two vehicles that can safely make it there and back over in the pass, because that is, is an issue which I can't ask you.
Well, that doesn't really answer, like a 2017 versus 2018.
The warranties, the warranty issue, I mean, you'll get, you'll get a longer warranty. It's just more security. I, I just, so there's not actually a policy that guides it, but that's, this is what makes sense to do at this point.
Ms. Selby?
Speaking as a former state employee, you don't really want to buy used vehicles out of the state vehicle. By the time the state's done with them, you don't want them.
Yeah, no. That's true. And, and the other, the other issue really is if we want to go out to buy a used vehicle on the market, we have to go through a whole bid process. This is done. We just, we just click the box and we can buy it. We don't have to go through all that process. Trying to evaluate a used vehicle and comparing them to see who twits better and, and be within a price is really difficult. On your, on your construction equipment, like dump trucks or something like that, that, that's a little bit different, but these vehicles like this, it, you know, it's just better buying.
Ms. Selby?
I would move that we authorize purchase of two 2019 Jeep Compasses for the travel vehicles off the state bid contract for an amount that exceeds $54,714.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion?
What color?
White. White.
Seeing?
Only a wine would ask.
No, 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 no. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. We'll be mudding out at Homestead here with those shortly, right?
No.
Mr. Ricard has a picture of what happens when you drive an off-road vehicle in a wetland.
Yeah, what they're talking about is, my, my inspector was, my inspector was out, I think it was Friday, and for the end of the day, a resident up on the upper part of Homestead, up on the hill, decided that it would be wise to try driving through the wetland. He got quite a ways in, and then he couldn't get out. And contractor decided to be helpful and took their large loader in and buried it in the wetland up to the cab, all four wheels off.
They were buried, yeah.
It was bad. It was terrible.
And there was another one that they had to go out to rescue the two that were stuck.
And?
So, there's a picture?
Yeah. I'm just adding another vehicle every day to try to pull. Still there? There's, there's a few holes here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hartwig. Moving right along to acceptance of Transportation Infrastructure Award for C Street Project.
I'm doing this for Robert. And really, we got an award for the C Street project. And this, basically, we're coming here for, to counsel for authorization, for the mayor to execute the agreement with TIB for the funding of this project.
Ms. Selby?
I would move that we accept TIB's offer of grant funding and authorize the mayor to execute the fuel tax grant agreement with TIB for grant funding for the C Street project, TIB number, TIB project number 8-4-177-009-1, and her staff provides supporting information and certifications requested by TIB.
I'll second.
Then moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion?
Good to hear.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. And now, Acceptance of Transportation Improvement Board Award for the Lampurdy Overlay Project.
Same thing. I do have to, I do, I do have to say, Robert Gordon and Mike deserve a big round of applause or a big thank you, because Robert putting that together, the application, and Mike knowing people and making the contacts are extremely important in trying to get success on these grant applications. So, this was, this is a grind and overlay of Lampurdy. And so, we're asking for authorization to allow the mayor to execute a contract in the amount of $321,209 with TIB.
Mr. Rizetella?
And then two items. This project is going to allow us also to replace some of the sidewalk panels that are heaving and doing weird stuff, because the incorrect trees were planted over there. And we also submitted a tree grant, since we're a tree city, to basically tear out the trees that are messing up the road and put trees that are actually supposed to be there on the corridor, so.
And along with, along with that, the irrigation system was put incorrectly, so we can't even irrigate the trees that are there now. And they're buried right along with the root. And so, we will replace the system as well.
Ms. Selby?
Well, I would just like to point out that I agree with the commendation, and I think it's awesome that we are, we passed such a large budget, but huge chunks of it were other people's money, and it's the best kind of spend.
OPM is very good.
Thank you.
That's right.
Is, is there a motion?
You go, you're in.
Fine. I move that we accept the TIB's offer of grant funding and authorize the mayor to execute fuel tax agreement with TIB for grant funding for the Lampurdy Overlay Project, TIB project number 3-E-177-004-1, and her staff provides supporting information and certifications requested by TIB.
Second?
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. And the final action item this evening is a motion to cancel the regular meeting schedule for December 25, 2018, with the next regular meeting being scheduled for January 8, 2019.
So, we're not even getting together on New Year's Day either? For workshop?
No.
You guys really don't want to come in on Christmas.
Oh, I'll be here on Christmas. I just wouldn't expect you to be. And there being no further business that the city needs to conduct, we recommend that we cancel the December 25 meeting.
We have to.
I will be up too.
Ms. Sherman?
I'll make a motion to cancel that are going to be scheduled for December 25, 2018, with the next regular meeting being scheduled for January 8, 2019.
Second?
It's, it's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. She, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We'll see you all on January 8, but first, we have an executive session and we'll have an, we're going to have an executive session to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale or leased when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of a decreased price. However, final action, selling or leasing public property shall be taken in an open meeting, in a meeting open to the public. So, if we could have all, Ms. Caldwell?
Can I say one thing real quick? Since we're still like in the meeting?
Yeah.
Are we still in the meeting, or are we?
No, we haven't, we haven't.
You haven't adjourned yet.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you to you all for the winter fest. That was so fun, and everything was really, really great. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the staff for the year.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll open the meeting back up at the end of that. But if, if we could have the public, Mr. Hartwig, Mr. Ricard, I think you would both stay, please. You have some knowledge of this, but, if you would stay, that would be fine. We're, we're back on in session. We have no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. Is there a second? It's seconded by Ms. Nyhagen. We are adjourned.
God bless you all. Merry Christmas.
Have a Merry Christmas.
So, if we can turn, if we can turn the...